We needed to open up kind of the
A dialogue, just to make sure.
The full calendar to try to pick the best date, I think. Given the commission, the flexibility, bring calendars.
I put a time to measure myself, like, and I wait till the very last minute, but I'll find it good.
I did. There's no reperfection.
You ready?
I know, right?
It is 1:00 Tuesday, January 21st. This is the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is my time or turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting to help us make decisions to move our community forward in a positive manner and direction. Be with and watch over all of our citizens in our community. Please guide and give wisdom to the nation and to our new president, the governor of our state, and all the governing bodies that watch over and rule our many different municipalities. Protect those who serve us as firefighters, police, disaster workers, and medical personnel. Miss, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Up next is 4A, the approval of the minutes if there's any changes. It'll stand approved as presented. Next item is Public Comment 5, where anybody can come forward and provide comment on any item that is not on the agenda, and we give you five minutes. And we just ask that you state your name for the record. Okay, moving on to 6A.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim January 31st, 2025, as Girl Scouts and Kansas Heartland Council 100th Anniversary in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on approving the proclamation as presented?
Mayor, I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. That item passed. I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll... I know we have quite a few Girl Scout representatives here, and we did receive some delicious cookies, it looks like, for us to enjoy. I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation states, "Whereas January 31st, 2025, marks the 100th anniversary of the formation of the Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland Council, which began in 1925 when Girl Scouts of USA awarded the first council charter in Kansas. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland, through their office located in Garden City, Kansas, in conjunction with the legacy councils, has inspired thousands of girls and women to strive for the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas to kick off the 100th anniversary celebration, girls and adults across Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland performed 100 acts of service to benefit multiple organizations throughout the Garden City community and across the state. And whereas Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland is committed to offering membership and quality programs on a year-round basis to girls in all racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and socioeconomic groups. And whereas, in its second century of service, Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland is continuing a legacy of providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making the city of Garden City, the state of Kansas, this country, and the world a better place." Now therefore, I, Roy Cesna, the mayor of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim January 31st, 2025, as Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland Council 100th Anniversary in Garden City, and urge all residents of the city to join in this observance. Sign and seal the 21st day of January, 2025, Roy Cesna, Mayor.
Hi, guys.
You guys want to stand right here and hold the proclamation?
Turn around.
Turn around, so we can get a picture.
Here. Scoot back a little bit.
Hold the proclamation.
Scoot back a little bit. There we go, so we can do this all on camera. One, two, three. Smile. There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on.
Let me slide in real quick.
Not it? Okay, one more track.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, too, guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Did you guys want to say anything about what you guys have done or the celebration?
Sure. I'm Melinda Seampull, and I'm the CEO for Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland. And we are very excited to be a part of the Garden City community. It has been wonderful for us to help serve the girls. And one of the things that we did with our 100th year is we encouraged at least 100 acts of kindness throughout our council, and we had 147 acts of kindness involving over 1,500 people of Girl Scouts who gave back to communities all across the Radye counties. So, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 7A.
7A, Commissioners, this year's annual goal-setting retreat, based off some feedback from the commission, and in kind of our continual effort to tweak and make most ideal the retreats you do annually, we're looking at returning to something that we had done in years past but kind of got away from, and that is giving department heads direct opportunity to present kind of the most important things to them as the context and backdrop for a retreat. So instead of kind of the afternoon portion of the day-long retreat being the brainstorming, prioritization, kind of the goal-setting exercise, moving that to a pre-meeting time, much like you did this morning, where we take an hour and a half, maybe two hours. But in advance of that, spend the day-long session having these meetings and these interactions with the department heads. And so if you're open to trying that, and I think at least on a preliminary level, you all expressed an interest in trying that, we would like you to identify the date of the goal-setting retreat that would work best for you. And then in close proximity to that, the next pre-meeting after you've heard of all those presentations will go through the brainstorming exercise and prioritization exercise as we've traditionally done. So the chore before you today is one, I agree that that's the style of retreat, in this case, a kind of a day-and-a-half retreat. The full day being the presentation of the department heads, the partial day being a pre-meeting workshop before a City Commission meeting. And if you're agreeable to that, figuring out the day, we would ask you to consider between mid-February and mid-March, hopefully before, or ideally before the first meeting in March, so that that first meeting in March could be the pre-meeting workshop where we do the prioritization. But if it needs to kick out to the second meeting in March, we can adjust. For further context, we don't send out department budgets, or at least don't ask for those to be returned until they know, until the department heads know what your budget priorities are, so that they can incorporate those into the development of their budget.
I know when the, those, I know the February 27th and the March 3rd date that was sent out worked for me. Are there any other dates?
So is Mike Condestran in the 13th of February?
I believe that's right.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if that had changed, or I didn't know. I'm sorry, you said the 3rd or the 13th?
The 27th. The email that we got was talking about the 27th or the 3rd of March as retreat dates.
Yeah, the 27th I could not make.
Okay.
But I could make the 3rd.
Okay. Everybody else?
Both dates worked for me.
Yeah, the 3rd's fine with me.
Great.
The 3rd's good for me.
Okay.
The 3rd, you don't want, I mean, I think any date is open for discussion. Initially, I had sent those two out because they were closest in proximity to the meeting on the 4th, but it could be moved if there's a better date for everybody.
February 20th, is that open on everybody's calendar? I mean, if, I mean...
February 20th is open. That'd be great.
And then have the pre-meeting on the 25th? Sorry. We would wait until the 3rd or the 4th?
Until the 4th, right.
That'd be a little bit too long for me to... I think I would have a closer time to either a regular scheduled meeting to have that fresh in my mind and later on.
Okay.
I would, we, depending, we've offered, I think the commission had expressed in an earlier meeting the desire to have a joint meeting soon with Fannie County, and we've offered up that second meeting workshop time as a possibility for their consideration. Yeah, that's the 18th.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, you were talking about the 20th, yeah.
I was talking about February 20th.
Yeah.
Just to give a different date.
It'd be March 11th.
Instead of having the March 3rd, and then...
Back-to-back days.
Back-to-back days.
I mean, my 25th is open also, so I mean, that's a Tuesday. And then we'd just be followed up by the next week.
I can make that work, the 25th of February. But again, then that goes back to, that making it even longer for you.
It'd be, March 4th would be the first pre-meeting.
Right.
So that would be, 2, 3, so we'd have a...
I would much rather have it on the 27th than the 25th.
Okay.
That was unavailable for you?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. I wish I could.
I mean, with, March 3rd seemed...
20, yeah, 25th, 26th, March 3rd, I'm good with... If 27th is out.
Do we just want to do it on, it sounded like everybody, the 3rd was worked for everybody, so let's just do it on March 3rd. We'll have it fresh in our minds, come back the next day.
Yeah.
Have that pre-meeting.
Great.
Okay.
March 3rd it is. Thank you.
That was easy.
Pardon me while I get back to... I'd like to offer our Service and Finance Department, particularly our Finance Director, Jared Coleman, recognize them on the occasion of them receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2023. So congratulations to Jared and his staff.
Awesome. How many years is that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how many years running is this thing?
A lot.
I think since 1992. Maybe 1993, yeah, every year except for one, which was in the late 90s.
29 consecutive years.
29 consecutive years. That's awesome.
With the switch to KMAC, this is the last year we'll get this, because we won't be going through GFO anymore for review.
Okay.
End our streak at 29.
Great. Oh, wow. Okay. Well, thank you and congratulations.
7C. Municipal Court Administrator Beltran will present the 2024 Annual City of Garden City Municipal Court Report. Cynthia?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We like to do this annual report to give you an update of our numbers for the year, as well as some updates from our department this last year, and then anything going forward in the next year, so...
Cynthia, do you want me to go off of the packet, or is there a separate file?
Uh, no.
I can scroll with you, you just may have to tell me when to scroll.
Yes, that'll work.
So we're done with this slide. There we go.
With our staff, they're, this is a list of our staff, but there's no changes from last year. The next slide has our case law violations summary report. So this is a report that is sent to the Kansas Office of Judicial Administration, and it runs from July until June, so that's why both years are included on each line. Also, they made a change last year where instead of the amount of cases that are reported, it's the amount of violations. And so I went back and did a new report for the previous five years. But, so with the total violations, that's, somebody can have more than one violation on a citation, so those numbers will probably look a little bit bigger than the previous years, but that's why. And then the next one, so this is just the total for court-appointed attorneys. So in 2024, we have 340 cases that were appointed to our two court-appointed attorneys, which are the same from the previous year. Steve Cott and Christopher Philippi, he was appointed late last year. He replaced Attorney Younger. And so this is the numbers for that. With our revenue, our revenue did increase a bit this last year, and the cases filed did go down a little bit, so the amount per case was a little bit higher than the previous year.
Can you kind of elaborate why that?
Oh, we just have a great prosecutor that...
Okay.
No, I think a lot of different things, kind of, like, you can kind of see with the next few slides with our diversion numbers, and then I think Fast Track also was a big factor in that as well.
Okay.
So diversions also went up a little bit, and, but not too much, I don't think, not a big change of diversions. And then on the next slide, we'll have our Fast Track numbers, which with Fast Track, the numbers went up because we changed a little bit of the requirements for eligibility on that, and so that's why we were able to offer that a bit more, and so that's what increased the revenue to $52,000 this last year. So some updates that we've had in the last year, we did, along with some other departments, implement Tyler Technologies. That was implemented in July of last year. So with that, it has helped with some form automation, so we're able to generate a lot more forms within the system and kind of change them with how we want and update them as much as we want, so we do that directly in our department. It also helped with a lot of task automation, so with our previous system, what might have taken 10 clicks now only takes 2 clicks, so we're able to change a lot of those things as well. It's also helped with communication, so we're able to, it has a feature where we're able to send texts or things like that through our, or emails through our system directly to the defendants. So we've played around with it a little bit, we've kind of more focused on just getting all the basics covered. So with this next year, that's kind of one of the things that we wanted to focus on is maximizing notifications, so whether that's reminders for court, or reminders for diversion payments, or probation payments, or probation appearances, things like that. And then just kind of playing around with the, you know, the date, you know, what day works better to send notifications, those things. And so this last year, we've been gathering a bit of data of, you know, how many benchwarrants were issued on, you know, for one docket, or how many people didn't show up to that docket, or a lot of other different things. And so we're going to kind of compare that this coming year with what, you know, if notifications affect anything, so does that affect how many people show up to court, or how many people are able to take care of their case before court, so those types of things. Also, we'll be able to maximize additional forms, so we'll be able to, you know, figure out what works for either the forms that we've already created, or what other forms are we using that we can use through the system that will help increase efficiency. Same thing with task automation, and then also reports. So the report part is a bit more complicated, but hopefully in the future, we'll be able to attend more conferences as well, and they do usually do report building trainings there as well, so... With, so coming this year, one thing that we'll be working on is we're going to be implementing, or we're going to be one of the departments that will be using Unitus, which is a platform that will help us make referrals to either other community organizations, or maybe even other departments within the city that we may need to refer people who either like need help with like paying an electric bill, or they need help with housing, or different things like that, if they come either to court or they're on probation. So we'll be able to help make referrals for that. We also wanted to increase our social media presence, so that will be a focus for this coming year. And then the diversion program is also, was moved to the city prosecutor's office, so that's something that we're transitioning through as well. And beyond this year, so something that we may, some things that we may look at either this year or beyond, so we want to try to focus a bit more on mental health or drug cases, so if somebody comes and has mental health needs, how to help, you know, move them through the system in a better way, or get information to the prosecutor and judge ahead of time so that they're aware of, you know, the situation. And then we're also going to look at one of our clerks becoming a driving class instructor, and so they would be able to help with driving classes either for the city, or the, you know, somebody required to do a driving class for diversion or anything like that. Instead of having to do it online, then we would look at offering those classes in person. Also, just connecting people, which the community resources may work with Unitus, but just getting more informed about the resources in our community, so that way we are able to help the people that come into our office get connected. And then just having more state engagement, so being more involved with the like state conferences and things like that, or other cities or counties in our state to get more education, or help them if they need help with any resources, or, you know, with our training and things like that. So that's basically it. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I appreciate you, 25 and beyond, I think that's, I mean, just that's really thinking outside the box, and really this idea of making it a community service and really meeting the community where they're at or what they might have needs of, so I thought that was really neat.
I like you thinking outside the box and trying to provide other services for, for the people, like the driving instructor, so it's always nice to see. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Good job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Items 7C through G are all staff reports. Do you have any questions over those?
No, just what an incredible year for the airport. I mean, that was, I don't know what the next level, or what, if you shoot for different levels, or, but I mean, I'll tell you, this year was a standout year, just heads and shoulders above many years. And I know the airport terminal's been a big part of that, so...
Fly Garden City.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Meetings of note.
Yes, the, the meetings of note are on, on your agenda there. If any of those require RSVPs, please let the city clerk's office know. We'll advise the commission that the dates for the Western Kansas Congressional Delegation reception in Washington DC are April 6th through 8th. Governing body representatives for that that have been confirmed are the mayor and the vice mayor. And then staff at this point will be Rochelle Powell, of course, the kind of focus of that trip has historically been the Essential Air Service Program meeting, but then also Assistant City Manager Danielle Burke and myself. And then if one of us, Danielle or I can't make it, Derek, has kind of got that penciled in to cover down as well. And so the other one I'd call your attention to is the Southwest Kansas night out in Topeka. If anybody's interested in that, please, please contact the city clerk's office soon, and we can figure out kind of carpooling arrangements to Topeka. And there may be the possibility of an up and back, an interest in up and back. I know that makes for a really late night, but we can also make overnight arrangements if you feel more comfortable staying the evening and coming back the next day. We do have a City Commission meeting the next day, so you're either going to be getting back late or getting up early, one of the two. The, I think we've got enough time, well, I guess the next item's the appropriation ordinance, 9A. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2579-2025A.
I make a motion, we approve appropriation ordinance number 2579-2025A. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
We're still a few moments away from the scheduled public hearing that's under item 10A. 10B requires consideration of 12B first, so if you'd like to take up 12B, we could come back and take up 10B, and then we should be on schedule to take up 10A.
Okay.
If you're agreeable to that, item 12B.
Yes.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the collection contract with CBK Inc. for collection of delinquent customer accounts and municipal court fines and fees at the City of Garden City. Colleen?
Good afternoon. Staff have conducted a review and assessment of our collections processes for delinquent utility billing and municipal court accounts, as well as an analysis of the current services received through the city's current provider, Account Recovery Specialists, Inc., ARSI. The 25th Judicial District, of which Fannie County District Court is a part of, recently switched providers to the Collection Bureau of Kansas, also called CBK, and has been a significant increase, and has seen a significant increase in collections revenue. So the staff believes that the city would likely experience an increase in collections revenue through utilizing the services of CBK as designated collections agency to manage delinquent accounts. For utility billing, when an account becomes delinquent or a customer discontinues service, the city issues a final bill to the address on file. If the bill remains unpaid, staff then conduct an account audit to determine if the customer has any other active accounts in the city. Should matching information indicate an active account, the outstanding balance will be transferred accordingly for accounts. With no matches, unpaid balance will then be referred to CBK for collection. It's important to note that with this transition, the cost of collections will now be the responsibility of the citizen or the debtor, rather than deducted from the City of Garden City's collective funds. Previously, the associated, the associated fees were deducted from the amounts permitted to the city. Following the approval of this contract, staff will present an ordinance to the governing body that identifies CBK as a designated agency to manage the city's delinquent accounts, and establishes that the fees associated with the collection on such accounts will be the burden and responsibility of the delinquent account holder.
Any questions?
Where is CBK located? I can't remember. Is it a...
The Kansas City-Topeka area.
Because I knew ARSI was located here locally. Or they...
Well, they were, but I think their office closed.
Wow.
I think that's why we're switching, is because their office closed, so...
In CBK, their governing clients, they do have over 140 municipalities and then judicial courts, and there's several of those, too, so they have really good coverage across the state of Kansas.
Yeah, I appreciate you, you moving the fees to where they really should be rather than our, than through the city, so...
I move that we approve the contract of CBK Inc.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
The corresponding ordinance that would put this officially into place is item 10B, the governing body's asked to consider and approve an ordinance authorizing a new debt collection service agency for the City of Garden City. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 3003-2025. And I think the background for this is the same as the background for the other.
Entertain a motion on ordinance 3003-2025, then?
I move we approve ordinance number 3003-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. It's...
It's, if I talk slow enough, it'll be time for the 1:30 public hearing, Mayor Commissioners, item 10A. This is a public hearing for the governing body to consider and approve an ordinance making... ordinance, making findings regarding a redevelopment district and establishing a redevelopment district at property generally located at 2800 block, at the 2800 block of East Highway 156. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 3004-2025. So we'll start with the opening of the public hearing, at the conclusion of the public hearing, and close the public hearing, Mayor. And then the commission would be, and then appostate for a motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
I'm opening the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On December 5 of 2024, the city commission authorized a memorandum of understanding with S&amp;K Cinema Holding Group, Inc., Doing Business as Icon Cinemas, that outlined the anticipated project costs, along with the anticipated public contributions, including but not limited to tax increment financing, community improvement districts, special obligation bonds, and other city incentives. At the December 17 meeting of last year, the city commission authorized a 1:30 public hearing, giving members of the public an opportunity to speak on the proposed project. At this time, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance establishing the redevelopment of property located at the 2800 block of East Highway 156. The proposed redevelopment district is an eligible area because it is in an enterprise zone, and redevelopment of the area is necessary to promote or conserve the general economic welfare of the city. This is the second step in a multi-step process to provide TIP financing for redevelopment in this area. Following the adoption of the ordinance, the developer will provide a TIP redevelopment plan, which will go before the planning commission for a finding that it is consistent with the intent of the city's comprehensive plan, and then come back before the governing body for final approval. City Bond Council, Mary Carson, has assisted in the preparation of the attached ordinance, which has also been reviewed and approved by the developer. There are two alternatives before you this afternoon. The first, the governing body may approve the ordinance establishing a redevelopment district within the city. Or two, the governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, and there is no fiscal note associated at this time with the redevelopment district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And has anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this during the public hearing? All right. None being. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, entertain a motion on ordinance 3004-2025.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 3004-2025, establishing a redevelopment district within the city.
Second.
A motion? There's been a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 10C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution designated banking institutions to be used as depositories for the city's public funds. If approved, it would be resolution number 3156-2025.
As an annual practice, the city of Garden City adopts a resolution at the beginning of each year for the designating of banking institutions. It is considered to be a best practice in accounting and public financial reporting to list the institutions that are depositories for the city's public funds. The following list of institutions were approved in 2024. Staff recommendation is that they remain the same for 2025. The only adjustments are that Valley State Bank was previously on the list, but was acquired by Security State Bank in 2024. The list has been updated to reflect Security State Bank. So the list is the same. I will note that in the resolution language, if there was any other financial institution that met the requirements to be a knowledgeable fund holder for the city funds, they can be endorsed as well. And not all of these have an account for the city right now, but they would be eligible to do so. So the alternatives before the governing body today are that the resolution may be approved as presented, or the governing body may take no action today and provide recommendations for changing the list of institutions used to deposit public funds and direct staff to submit a resolution for consideration at a future meeting. And staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution as presented.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
May I move we approve resolution number 3156-2025?
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 10D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution 3157. It would obey conditions at 2316 North 7th Street.
Hi, Alicia.
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property within the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 2316 North 7th Street has an environmental nuisance condition on the property, and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There are totes, furniture, and random items located under the carport of the property. Staff has visited the property on many occasions. The property owner and the residents have been notified by two order of violations sent December 3, 2024, and a certified order of violation on December 20th, 2024. The property owner and the residents were unable to be reached, and no contact was attempted by the property owners according to section 38-137 of the Environmental Code of Ordinances, and have neither abated the nuisance condition nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on this property. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution, and the fiscal note is the abatement cost incurred by the city shall be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the environmental nuisance is located.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 3157-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to a site lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for leased space on a city water tower located at 2406 North Campus Drive. Fred.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The city entered into a tower space lease agreement with Verizon Wireless in 2000 for space on the campus in Mary Tower located 2406 North Campus Drive. Staff from the Water Department reached out to Verizon to renegotiate the terms of the agreement in 2024. The agreement presented today extends the lease agreement starting September 16, 2025, for an additional five-year term until September 16, 2030. The agreement has a provision for four additional five-year term extensions unless either party chooses to terminate the agreement. Each subsequent five-year lease term will include a 5% increase in the lease payment. And the lease amendment and prior agreements for this tower rental are attached with the agenda item. The governing body may choose to accept the Second Amendment to the tower lease agreement as presented. The governing body may choose not to accept the Second Amendment to the tower lease agreement, or the governing body may choose to direct staff to seek an alternate proposal to the agreement as presented for consideration at future governing body meeting. Staff recommends alternative number one, accept the Second Amendment to the tower lease agreement. Under the fiscal note, if approved, proceeds from the agreement will be coded to the GL listed in the memo, which is rental of city facilities. And the rent paid for the lease agreement will be $18,000 annually for the first five-year term, and increase 5% each subsequent term. The agreement provides for four subsequent five-year terms after the initial term, unless terminated by either party. The existing agreement is currently $9,000 annually for the First Amendment, which was accepted by the governing body in 2004.
Any questions from the commission? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we accept the Second Amendment to the tower space lease agreement as presented.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
We've completed 12B, so we're ready for 12C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve authorizing the mayor to sign an audit engagement letter with Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC to perform financial auditing services for the city of Garden City for the years ending December 31, 2024 through 2028.
At the August 6, 2024, meeting of the city commission, the governing body approved a new engagement agreement with Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC to perform financial auditing services for the city of Garden City for the years ending December 31, 2024 through 2026. Subsequently, at the October 15, 2024, meeting of the city commission, the governing body approved a transition to utilizing the regulatory basis of accounting prescribed in the Kansas Municipal Auditing Accounting Guide, or K-MAG, for their annual report, foregoing the practice of preparing the financial statements utilizing U.S. Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, or GAAP, beginning with the annual audit for the 2024 fiscal year. Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC has provided an updated audit engagement letter to reflect the changes to utilizing K-MAG for preparing an annual audit. The fee for auditing services is expected not to exceed $103,000 for the 2024 audit, with an increase not exceeding 3% per year for 2025 through 2028. This annual amount is significantly lower than the estimated total of the city had continued to utilize GAAP for their annual comprehensive financial report, which was $123,500 for 2024. Additionally, preparing the act for required a significant cost for additional professional services from Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC, which will be substantially reduced through utilizing K-MAG. For the 2023 audit, the overall cost of services from Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC was approximately $218,500. With the estimated cost for the 2024 audit of $103,000, it is estimated the city will expense approximately $115,500 less in 2024 for audit services than what was experienced in 2023. The alternatives before the governing body today are that they may authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter for auditing services with Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC, or the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter for auditing services with Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC, and direct staff to request qualifications from vendors for the service. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter for auditing services with Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC. And as a fiscal note, the cost of the city audit is spread proportionally across the city's taxing and enterprise funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter for auditing services with Lewis Hooper &amp; Dick LLC.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item?
Now, I know why you've 29 years straight, so this is excellent news. You save money like this. That's, I'm impressed. So.
Any other discussion? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much. Good job. Make note that Commissioner Ortiz is stepping down from the bench on this item.
Item 12D. Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve negotiating a contract with Hutton Design &amp; Build and GM CN Architects for architectural services for Lee Richardson Zoo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As the city manager said, we have before you the opportunity to consider and pre-negotiating the contract for architectural services for the zoo. Funds were approved through capital improvement program for design, artistic rendering, estimated construction budgets, and construction documents for the view, bird viewing, and holding building, 7th Street drive-in entrance, and Wild Horse and Camel Barns. During the meeting of November 5, the governing body approved releasing a request for proposals. Five proposals were received in December. Four of those moved on to being reviewed by the selection committee. The one that was not considered presented a fee structure that was significantly higher than all the others, and above our budget. The selection committee consisted of the zoo deputy director, parks and rec director, Commissioner Landgraf, Parks, Public Works and Utilities Infrastructure Inspector Baca, the friends of Lee Richardson Zoo Executive Director, and me. The aspects taken into consideration by the selection committee to develop a score for the proposals in interviews included qualifications of key personnel, capacity for effectively delivering on the project, experience in designing, construction documents, rendering, and estimating construction budgets, experience in Western Kansas, experience in zoos, experience with entryways, past performances, and understanding of the project, breakdown of costs, and quality control process and management. Upon completion of the interviews, scoring was conducted. The selection committee identified Hutton Design Build and GM CN Architects as a recommended team to provide the specified services. So before you, two alternatives. Number one, governing body may approve staff to negotiate a contract for design and development of construction documents, renderings, estimated construction budget with Hutton Design Build and GM CN Architects, requiring a time and expense agreement with an established maximum fee. Number two, you may not approve negotiating a contract for the specified services with that company. And give us some other further guidance. The selection committee recommends alternative one. There are no fiscal impacts at this time that would come into play when the contract is approved at a later meeting, hopefully.
Any questions for this item?
I did have a question or point of clarification. Maybe this is a question for the team, or maybe you, Kristi, can answer it. The corporate name, Hutton Design Plus Build, is that a corporate name change, or that's not to be interpreted as this is a design-build agreement?
That is not to be interpreted as a design-build. That's the name they're going by.
And this is, the services you mentioned in the, that are mentioned and laid out in the RFP, the services for design, artistic renderings, estimating construction budgets, and preparing the construction documents. If any of these facilities were to be approved for construction by the governing body at a later date, the, the construction of the facility would be a separate bidding process, or a separate identified process.
That is correct.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I did have the privilege of sitting on the 2017, when they had the tax, we had the sales tax initiatives and sitting on that. And that was an incredibly hard decision. Each and every one of these proposals was really well done. I mean, I, it just was, it showed the creativeness of a lot of the organizations. But I really appreciated when we, at that time, we also chose Hutton to do, you know, the, several of the new things that happened at, at the Lee Richardson Zoo. So yeah, it was very impressive. So.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move staff to negotiate contract for design and development of construction documents, renderings, and estimated construction budgets with Hutton Design &amp; Build and GM CN Architects, requiring a time and expense agreement with established maximum fee.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. We'll wait for Commissioner Ortiz to come back to the bench.
Item 12B. The governing body is asked to consider and authorize the mayor to sign a funding commitment letter for the 2025 RACE grant application for a grade-separated crossing at US 8350 and 400 and Spruce Street.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. At your November 5, 2024, meeting, the governing body approved moving forward with a planning grant application to the United States Department of Transportation RACE program for pre-construction activities associated with a grade-separated crossing at Spruce Street and US 8350-400. Since that time, a task order with Wilson &amp; Company has been executed for grant writing assistance and project cost estimating. Work on that has progressed accordingly. The project will include a concept and alternatives analysis phase, which will concept multiple alternatives for public input, and ultimately a governing body decision and selection. Through an initial technical analysis and coordination with the Kansas Department of Transportation, it has been determined that an underpass should also be considered in addition to an overpass as the project progresses. Design features will include the list of the following. I'm not going to go through those unless there are specific questions, but you can see there's a pretty robust process that's been identified. An initial budget for the engineering and other pre-construction work was established by Wilson &amp; Company at $748,000. Additional contingency and inflation was added for a total budget of $913,000. And a full project, a cost of each of those components was included in your agenda packet. The RACE program provides for 100% funding for projects within what it determines as a rural county, which Finney County falls. The program does not award additional credit for higher match percentage. As such, the city's grant application is for 100% project funding. The project budget contains contingent- The project budget contains contingencies that staff intends to cover unforeseen circumstances. However, the city, as part of the application, must commit to funding any project overruns beyond that grant award if we were selected. The RACE grant is due January 30th of this year. Staff has prepared a funding commitment letter to include in that application projects, the project awards are expected in June, and if awarded, it's anticipated that work would start very near year's end and take approximately two years to complete. So there are three alternatives before you. One, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the funding commitment letter as written. Two, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign a funding commitment letter with modifications. Or three, the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign that letter. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the funding commitment letter as written. Should the project stay within the anticipated budget, there would be no fiscal impact. However, should the project experience additional overruns in excess of what is already included in the contingency, the overrun would be funded using general fund fund balance. And we included a copy of that letter in your packet, as well as the general budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Have we ever completed a RACE grant before, or is this our first foray into this opportunity, or...
So this program was funded through the bill, five-year bill program, so it is new. So this would be our first go at this particular grant application.
So I know it's competitive. Is it competitive state by state, or is it competitive just the whole United States?
The whole United States. And there's fairly limited funding remaining in 2025, so they have two rounds. The first round has already been allocated, we're looking at the second round. They do appear to value kind of time in the queue, so if it is not successful this year, we still would have kind of all of the materials pulled together if we wanted to resubmit that application in 2026 as well.
I appreciate it, really, opportunity.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the funding commitment letter as written.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12F, the governing body has asked to consider and authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement between the City of Garden City and 4A's Property, Inc., for the Community Improvement District generally located at 401 East Kansas Avenue.
Good afternoon again, this item has been before you a couple different times at this point. This particular item is coming after your November 19th, 2024 commission meeting, where you all held a public meeting, giving members of the public an opportunity to speak on this proposed project. After that, hearing was concluded, the governing body created a CID district known as 4A Properties, Inc., CID, and authorized the levy of a CID retailer's sales tax to be collected within the district in an amount of 2% to pay a portion of the project costs. Publication of that ordinance was contingent upon the execution of a development agreement. That is the item before you today, and if approved, the ordinance would be published and the district would officially be created. This was completed by city bond council Mary Carson, and has been reviewed by the developer as well. Two alternatives before you. The first, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement between the City of Garden City and 4A's Properties, Inc., for the Community Improvement District generally located at 401 East Kansas Avenue, where the governing body may not authorize the signature. Staff recommends alternative one, and there is no fiscal impact by creating the CID district. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this item? None being, entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement between the City of Garden City and 4A's Properties, Inc., for the Community Improvement District located at 401 East Kansas Avenue.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The consent agenda has three items. If you don't wish to pull any of those off and discuss them separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items 13A through 13C.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda 13A through 13C. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
That wraps up the business items for today's meeting, Mayor. You can move to Commissioner Reports at this time.
Commissioner Landgraf's first for today.
So I just want to say thank you to everyone that was part of the selection committee for the zoo projects. It was really great being able to serve on there with you guys, and thank you for taking essentially the entire day out of your time to serve on that as well. And also, thank you to the Commission for pointing me onto that selection committee as well. Just want to say, the pre-meeting was really good, a little bit longer, but I think we really did hash out some things that needed to be hashed out during that time, so I just want to say thank you to staff for putting that together. I thought it went really well. Thank you to Danielle, and also thank you to Chief as well. And finally, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff who was working out in this freezing cold weather this morning. You know, while we were in a pre-meeting in a nice heated office, everyone else was out working in below zero temperatures, so I just want to say thank you to all of you out there who were on staff, serving out in that cold.
Thank you, Commissioner Landgraf. Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, thank you for seeing staff and their hard work during our pre-meeting. I'm excited to say that we were able to offer city staff a good portion of what we think is necessary in a good direction for our community. Congratulations to the Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland 100th Anniversary, that is an amazing achievement, and their 147 acts of kindness, wow. A pretty quiet week for me, but I was able to meet with a couple students through the K-State Staley School of Leadership through their Alternative Break program. And they spent a week here in town to go over the agriculture diversity and rural systems, and how that whole dynamic works in Garden City. Yeah, so I met with two PhD students, Jess and Sunday, and then two undergraduate students, Jatida and Andrew. It was a great time with them. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you. Yeah, it is cold outside, so I'm kind of especially thinking of your pets. If you're not having them inside in a warm bed, consider putting them inside temporarily until this freeze kind of clears. But yeah, thank you to the staff who are out working. I know there was some power outages on Friday and Saturday, so they were out working. Not only those people, residents that were without power, but the staff who were working out there to get them back online, so thank you for their hard work. Pre-meeting today was really good. I liked that feedback. I'm kind of, I'm anxious about getting into the retreat for March 3rd, see how that process goes, and I'm sure it'll go well. With the staff who presented this morning was pretty good, and they'll have some good stuff to present on March 3rd, so looking forward to that. Also, just with all the projects going on, icy conditions, just be careful out there. You know, put salt down, I know it's hard to find in the stores nowadays, but shovel what you can, or blow it off if you can, so just be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh.
So yeah, I just want to echo all the other commissioners, the discussion, the pre-meeting discussion on the police department and the future of our, having a house for, a place to house our police department was really important, I think, and I really appreciate the candidness of each and every one of us, and willing to step out and say some things that might have been uncomfortable. Yeah, I agree with you, the 100th anniversary celebration of Girl Scouts, and then they put all the cookies up in front of us, which I thought, that's dangerous. Yeah, they are so incredible, so. I do just want to say, you know, I mean, it's sad that the 29-year run is over for the Service and Finance Department, but what a great 29 years, and we're looking forward to all the things that you're going to go far past that. I did want to say thank you to the first responders, you know, like you said, a lot of us are warm and are home, but a lot of times, they're out there in the coldest of the cold, really taking care of us, so. I can't imagine the City Water Department, if there was, when there was breaks, I can't imagine, but I really appreciate them and the Electric Department, and really, all the utilities in Western Kansas, especially in Garden City, we are so blessed to have heat and our electricity on most of the time. I did just want to remind everybody that there are shelter locations, in case you need those. I know that the city has posted on the Facebook, you can also find it on the Finney County, Kansas, where the shelter locations, and if you need shelter, there are times, there are places and contact information on that. I just want to also just say, just talk about the importance of the airport, and the value of the investment that we made with those 2017 tax dollars, and really, how, really, it's come to fruition, and you've seen really how Garden City is growing through that. So it is an incredible entrance to that, and I just want to say thank you to everyone, keep safe and keep warm.
Thank you. Won't go over all of the other items that all the commissioners, it's kind of bad when you go last, but again, congratulations to the 29 years of excellence for our finance department and their award. And it's great to see that, you know, they thought outside of the box, and are saving money on the accounting. Had to convince us to do that a little bit, but I think that'll help our community continue to move forward in a positive direction. Girl Scouts 100th Anniversary, congratulations to them on building leaders in our, not only in our community, but around the area. And just want to congratulate the airport on its record employment. Again, kind of like what Commissioner Unruh noted, it is our front door to our community, gateway to anywhere in the world, because you fly from here, and you hit Dallas, and you can go anywhere in the world, so fly local, and you can go globally. Again, stay safe with the temperatures being like they are, and I just thank all of our staff for all the hard work that they do to make Garden City a great place. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.